The order. Jenny, would you lead us in the pledge?
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We want to read all of these in order and then have the hearing or speak to each one independently.
Probably one at a time.
Okay. What we want to do tonight is read the petition warrant articles. We'd like to limit the comments to five minutes on each article, so if there's multiple speakers, if you can split up the five minutes or if you have a spokesman. So, doing that, we have Article number three. Are you in favor of placing the position of Director of Emergency Services under the authority of the Chief of the Plymouth Fire Department? This article was inserted by petition. Do we have any comment for or against this?
Do we get to ask why?
Make pardon.
Do we get to ask, like, the frozen, what are the frozen comments about?
This is just the petitioned article. And so, it says, it's going to be on the ballot, "Are you in favor of placing the position of Director of Emergency Services under the authority of the Chief of the Plymouth Fire Department?" I don't know who submitted this or what the reasoning was. Does the public have any comment? Catherine?
So, I've heard both sides of this, so without taking one side or the other, I'll try, I'll just explain what I've heard, and I hope it's all correct. So, one side says that it used to be under the Fire Department, and then 11 years ago, it was moved under the town, and, which probably made sense at the time because it was the same individual that was under, which was Paul, who was the administrator, and he was also Director of Emergency Management. Neil MacIver did some research into what other towns are doing, and most towns, from what he told me, it's under the Fire Department, because they're the ones that actually have training in emergency management, and whereas the town specifically, it may or may not, right? It would be a separate thing. So, one side says it makes sense to be under the Fire Chief, because they do emergency things anyway. The other side says it should be under the town in the same way that fire is under the town, police is under the town, highways under the town, and I heard from a woman in another town, actually, that it's more difficult to do the budgeting and figure out the money if it's under the Fire Department. So, that's all I know, and everything I'm saying is secondhand hearsay, so I hope I'm relating that correctly.
Well, that's fine. Thank you very much, Catherine. Yes, and if you would give your name, even though we've just got a small group, give your name. Does the Board have any comment on this one way or the other?
No.
Kathy? Nothing? Okay. The only question I had, and being involved in some of it through coordinating when we had to fire and some other things, and there's been some police emergencies, you know, flooding the body, they were looking for the suicide, is the coordination, because if police and fire are involved, you've got somebody that should have the authority, the independent authority, to coordinate the police, the fire, the state people, and when you have somebody that works under the Fire Chief, then, you know, it, to me, it seems like it wouldn't work as well, but again, that's just my opinion. Does anyone else have any comment on the article?
I'd love to know what the Fire Department thinks. I wish there was a.
Yeah, I wish they were too, but.
Because I don't know, I asked that question, but, I don't know.
Well, yeah, and I don't, I don't want to say, I, I have heard that, that it's, it's not a desire, but again, I heard, it's not firsthand information, so. Neil?
Yeah, could I speak, speak to this petition?
We've got, you get, go ahead. Come on up and identify yourself, there's about three minutes. What we're doing is five minutes per warrant article, and if there's three people, just split the time up, so.
Okay, I only need a minute.
Okay.
This petition was signed by 100 citizens from all walks of life, and they were all very concerned about it. Historically, the Fire Chief always was in charge of emergency services. The, I talked with the State Director of Homeland Security, who told me that every emergency that they had to deal with was weather-related, natural disasters, and I also talked with agents from other agencies who feel that we have enough coordination with the County Sheriff's Department and the State Police and the National Guard, so that, you know, the Fire Chief's Department should be able, should be the best ones equipped to manage this type of service.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any comments?
Bill? Regarding the financial coordination, I hadn't heard that one, that it might be better to be under the Town Hall, but if you look at the numbers of towns, at least in New Hampshire, and where this position is located, it's generally under the Fire Department, but, and what this article would do if it was passed was simply to bring it to the Board, for the Board to decide, so.
All right. Any other comments? We will move on to Article four, New Hampshire Resolution to Take Action on Climate Pollution. We, the Town of Plymouth, New Hampshire, call upon our state and federal elected representatives to enact carbon pricing legislation to protect New Hampshire from the cost and environmental risks continued climate inaction. To protect households, we support a carbon fee and dividend approach that charges fossil fuel producers for their carbon pollution and rebates the money collected to all residents on an equal basis. Enacting a carbon cash back program decreases long-term fossil fuel dependence, aids in the economic transition for energy consumers, and keeps local energy dollars in New Hampshire's economy. Carbon cash back has been championed by U.S. economists in the Wall Street Journal as the most effective and fair way to deliver rapid reduction in harmful carbon emissions at the scale required for our safety. We expect our representatives to lead in this critical moment for the health and well-being of our citizens and for protection of New Hampshire's natural resources upon which we all rely. The record of the vote approving this article shall be transmitted by written notice to Plymouth State Legislators, to the Governor of New Hampshire, to Plymouth Congressional Delegation, and to the President of the United States, informing them of the instructions from their constituents by Plymouth Select Board within 30 days of this vote. And who would like to speak to this article?
And let me, my name is Dick Hage, and I'm with the Pemme Climate Emergency Coalition, which has been the organization coordinating the effort to bring this petition forward. And I might add that this is, you heard Neil say, on the prior article, as you know, we need 25 signatures, and in very short order, well over 100 signed this one, and I'm certain we could have gotten several hundred if we had wanted to do that. Passage of this warrant article would basically be saying to officials at the state and federal level that there are citizens across the state who want to enact some form of fee on carbon emissions, on fossil fuels, coal, oil, and gas. There actually are, through the efforts of the Pemme Climate Emergency Coalition, there are over 70 communities in New Hampshire who want to bring this forward and will be voted on in March meetings across the state. Why this particular warrant article? 13 years ago, there were 164 New Hampshire communities who passed articles calling for climate action, and there's been simply insufficient activity by our legislative leaders to actually enact meaningful legislation to curb pollution. In fact, what we're facing right now on a daily basis, this is, this is a staggering number, but on a daily basis, not only have we not done anything over those 13 years to curb it, but we've increased to the point where today, every day in this country alone, 14 million 400,000 tons of carbon emissions are emitted into our atmosphere. That's just, that's just here at home. It's important to note that this particular article has no impact on anything that the Town of Plymouth would have to do, and no cost to the Town of Plymouth. What, in terms of, meaning that it would not have to spend any money or budget anything. In terms of the economic argument for placing this before citizens in New Hampshire, there are nearly over 3,400, roughly, economists, U.S. economists, who have supported this and have said so in the Wall Street Journal. It isn't a local issue, it's a global issue. 46 countries currently have some form of carbon fee. It's estimated that by the end of 10 years, 1/3 of carbon pollution will be reduced if this is enacted. Those economists are saying that this is the most cost-effective, quickest way and boldest way to do the major job that needs to be done in order to make a difference in our future. It'll grow the economy, it'll create many new jobs by encouraging, you know, a green economy. The transition may not be easy, but the fact of collecting the revenue from this carbon cash back will go into the pockets of everyone in this room and all citizens across the state. It's done by, how's it done? It's done by assessing a fee on carbon emissions. A penny a pound, or what turns out to be $20 a ton, would be assessed to the fossil fuel companies, and that $20 would increase annually, and it would go up $10 a year if it's the New Hampshire bill, which is House Bill 735. Then, it caps at $100, and the federal bill, there's another bill, and that's HB 763, that has no cap. In the case of New Hampshire, if this is passed, every citizen in the state 18 and older will get an annual dividend check from all of the revenue raised from the fossil fuel companies, not retailers, they're not being assessed. These are the, you know, the miners and the wells and, you know, the drilling of oil and so on. That money will be deposited in a trust, so no government, whether New Hampshire or the U.S., would have any claim on spending it, because it would be mandated that it goes back to all citizens. If it's the national one that passes, and let's say the New Hampshire one passed, the New Hampshire one would go away, because we don't need to duplicate. And then, if it's the federal one that passes, every citizen, including individuals under 18, receive a dividend, and those dividends would be on a monthly basis. Under 18 would receive a half share, over 18 would receive a full share every month. That's how it works. That $10 increase annually that would get us up to $100 is very modest compared to what some countries are doing. Finland, for example, currently, today, assesses $180 per ton of carbon pollution. Canada is doing this. They did this in one province, it worked so well, the country is doing it now. Why? Why support this? It's, it's the best way to correct what has been a market failure, and that is free pollution. We can't afford free pollution, we know what it's doing to our country. Consumers are protected, because as you can imagine, when fossil fuel companies are being charged, their rates are going to go up. So, this puts money back in people's pockets. It has been calculated by the economists that low and middle income will actually benefit with a net revenue gain compared to the cost of increased fuel. A lot of voices are needed, because it's pretty evident that our elected leaders have not, at the state and federal level, moved us forward to where we need to be to save our planet. So, locally, you know, the Pemme Climate Emergency Coalition has endorsed this, and we certainly hope it will pass in Plymouth. And heck, we certainly owe it to our children.
Thank you. Thank you, Dick. Does anyone have a comment of a different nature on this particular article? Does the Board have any questions? Mike?
I would like to commend the Pemme Climate Coalition Emergency Committee, you call yourselves. Because that was something that, it spells it out, it's not so vague, that was brought in front of the Select Board, that I was kind of embarrassed that we even decided to vote on it. It was a little, it, so I commend you for putting together some wording that you can actually debate and talk about. How many, and I have a couple of questions besides the compliment, how many states have enacted something like this?
I don't know the answer to how many states have enacted something like this, but this is really the brainchild of Citizens Climate Lobby, and they have been working, they've been in existence 11 years, and they've been working for 10 of those years with as many as 1,400 volunteers. There are 450 chapters of Citizens Climate Lobby across the country, and that was last summer, and it's grown since then, so I don't know the current number.
Because this whole concept has been out for 15 or 20 years.
Yes.
I think that's what's initially, and it was going to take over and be the law of the land.
Right.
And there were talk about offsets, that companies would then be entitled to buy offsets from companies that were, had kind of a negative footprint.
Yeah, credits.
Yeah, they could buy credits from other, I'm not sure whether they'd have to be in the same town, or, but, so, it was very interesting. So, let's say something like this gets enacted and the Governor signs it, you're saying it would put credits directly, which would translate to money in each citizen's pocket over the age of 18?
Yeah, not credits, actual cash checks.
So, we're talking something like what Alaska does with each person over the age of 18?
Well, yeah, except that that's kind of a reverse effect, because it's pumping oil, you know? Yeah, but yes, it's a similar kind of thing.
So, would there be, is there thought to, let's say we go into a war situation, and we've got to start producing, you know, every Rosie the Riveter is, everybody's called to action.
Of course.
Would this be set aside? Is there, they make?
Yeah, that's an excellent question, and I have no doubt, you know, like any piece of proposed legislation, it goes through iteration after iteration. This one has been honed over a 10-year period, and legislators at the federal level have weighed in on it, there are, how many, 60-some now, that have endorsed this bipartisan legislation at the federal level? Excuse me. Mike, I don't doubt that our military complex has to remain viable, so this doesn't.
A lot of manufacturing in New Hampshire that goes into the aeronautics industry, into the military industry, they're all over the state.
But keeping.
And so, when a company comes in and says, well, we can go to Massachusetts, Maine, yeah, New Hampshire's got that credit thing, that, I can just picture them choosing another state if one state has it.
Yeah, there is border protection in this legislation, so that if another state wants to bring oil into New Hampshire, and that wasn't extracted from the U.S. fields, then either the other country that provided it has to pay that to the U.S., or that state has to pay that to New Hampshire. So, there's border protection. There's, there's no question in my mind, I mean, the main reason for this is to promote a reduction in carbon pollution, because that's how we're going to save our kids, that's how we're going to save our planet, our ecosystems, ourselves.
You will have a lot of backing if this goes to the state legislature, or the Governor has to sign it. You can guarantee you will have a ton of support from all the surrounding states. They will be for this, for New Hampshire to enact it.
In order for this to actually be enacted, there has to be two other New England states, minimum.
There's a border alignment that has to go into.
They're excellent questions, and they're ones that are being researched by the economists and working on it now.
So, anyway, all my questions.
Bill?
I don't think I have any questions, and I don't know if we can show support, but we have recognized, you know, climate emergency, and this kind of goes hand in hand with that, and it's a solution to.
That would be absolutely wonderful if the Select Board at Town Meeting was able to say, we endorse this. So, I would hope that you would have a conversation about that.
And similar to the last warrant article, this is basically a recommendation to get the feeling of the town that will go before the Board.
I have one question, Dick. I mean, we're saying that they're gonna, we're going to charge them a fee, do we think they're not going to add that fee into the cost?
Oh, of course.
Of the energy?
Sure.
At the gas pump?
Sure, they will. Until the point.
So, basically, the money coming back would kind of be a reimbursement?
Exactly.
For not using.
Exactly. But, and this is intentionally gradual, phasing these rates higher in, because you've got to be fair to the fossil fuel companies too, they're in business, and they need to find ways over a reasonable transition period to convert.
Yeah.
And so do all of us.
Yeah.
So do all of us.
We just have to look at how many trips we take to the grocery store, this, and, you know, conserve our trips, and, you know.
Right.
Because I can remember at one point when gas was way up, I mean, you know, families were, you know, you're going and getting your mother and your father, and three families were going.
I remember walking with my father to my grandfather's place, and my dad, and he's one, he was one of six children, asked permission to borrow the family car and to have an allowance to take the family, I was like five, on a picnic.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, great.
Different time.
So, John, I may have one more comment.
Okay.
I think partly why this hasn't picked up a lot of steam is you saddled the companies in one particular state, let's, or three states in the region, however that works. The company would, there's a risk always of losing that business in that state, jobs, good jobs, and they would go to another state that does not have this imposed, because their ultimate consumers aren't in the state, the ultimate consumers are probably nationwide. And I think that we've got a system built in already that does all this, and the system is the fossil fuel tax on oil and gasoline, so that, I don't like to fly a whole lot, but if I do fly, I would hope that there's a tax to kind of say, do you really need to do that flight from Manchester to New York, or to DC, or to Florida? And it is a disincentive, and I think that it should be nationwide, which we have. So, you've got, there's a lot of people that fly, I don't, I'm sure there are a lot that do, and I think that that should be on the backs of those people that do that. There's a lot of people that own lawn mowers, they're some of the worst pieces of equipment for the environment, the first second that that, that lawnmower starts up is the, equals the next two hours of using that, you know, shouldn't the tax be in the gasoline for everybody nationwide to be paying that, rather than saddling one state with losing those good jobs? And that's what I fear, and I love what you're attempting to do, I just think there's probably a whole lot better way of doing this that maybe they've already put in place, but.
My name is Susan Matheson, I'm a property owner here in Plymouth. We completely agree, and one of the reasons why Plymouth Climate Emergency Coalition got involved in this statewide effort was in support of the federal legislation, which would be nationwide, as you suggest, that is the most effective way to do it, and we believe that by rallying towns across the state of New Hampshire, we would give voice to people like you and many of the PCEC group, that, and the more than 100 people that signed our petition, to tell our legislators at the national level that yes, there is a will to make this a national-level approach to keeping carbon in the ground. And in fact, because of our efforts, in part, Annie Custer just came out for the first time in support of this legislation. That was a big victory for us, because she had been very much opposed to it for many years, and I think the important part of what we're doing on Town Meeting Day is reminding people like Annie and others in our federal leadership that there is a will to do this at the nationwide level, because that is the place to do it.
So, John, I would say I would agree on the nationwide level, I love that approach. I'm just saying if we could, I think it's missing the key element, which is, let's not go after the businesses providing it, the businesses providing it for. go after the businesses providing it. The business is providing it for a reason. It's because your neighbors and you are buying it. You're going, and you're signing up for that flight on trip, whatever, and you're signed up for that flight, and you're determining that all that fossil fuel to run that jet, quick and easy, you're causing the fossil fuels to come out of the ground. You have a house that's three times the size of your needs. You're not closing off all that house, you're using that entire house for your, I'm not saying selfish needs, but it's your needs.
Extravagance.
Some people have two homes, and they're not only heating one home, but they're using both homes and heating them all winter. We're choosing to live in New Hampshire versus a neutral climate, where we may not have to use air conditioning, and they're air conditioning the entire home. It's up to, I think, the strategy is good, and nationwide is better. I'd hate to saddle the state with something like this without the other states being involved. It's a recipe for disaster.
I don't think you could.
No, but I think that the approach that we have, we can use the tools that are out there, and I would love to see your organization go at, with the tools we have, and say, let's go and let's start taxing the people that have two homes, three homes. I mean, I don't know how many homes Al Gore has.
So, that's the beauty of this, because the more fuel you use, the more tax, fees you're gonna pay, but you're only gonna get the same amount of dividend as I get. So, I have a small carbon footprint. The person that has four homes and takes jets everywhere, they're gonna pay a lot more in fees than they are in their check, because the check is equal to every citizen. So, if I have a small carbon footprint, don't have a lawnmower, don't fly, I'm gonna come out ahead financially. So, the research says the bottom three quintiles of the economic strata, the bottom three quintiles actually come out ahead making money, whereas the people with the boats and the jets and the lawn mowers and the four homes, they're gonna pay so much more that that check is not gonna compensate them. So, it incentivizes them to turn off the air conditioner, build a smaller home, take less trips.
Yeah, there's another part of that. There's a demand, but there's also a supply.
You want to stand and speak, so people can hear?
Sorry, I can't let Susan be-
Is this different than what we have already?
Well, it is, yes, it's a little, it's a little different. So, I'm Steve Rand, and I just wanted to point out to you that there are two sides to solving the problem of throwing all this carbon into the air. One is, we need to stop putting it in the air. The other one is, we need to incentivize the private, the private sector to make, to use their enterprise to create ways of having alternative energy. So, when you have a system that penalizes the use of carbon, as it should, because it recognizes the actual cost of it, which up to now has never been actually recognized in the price of the carbon fuels, then alternative energy becomes more attractive relatively, and it creates the opportunity for entrepreneurs to create new ways of replacing carbon fuels. So, you have, you have the private economy creating new ways of creating energy, not using carbon fuels, and you have the consumer trying to save on the other side, and the two work together to get the carbon, the carbon out of our atmosphere, which we need to do.
Keep it in the ground.
Keep it in the ground. Oh, yeah, by the way, sorry. So, one thing that I'd like you to remember is, like, the state legislation is kind of like, it's in some ways like what we're doing. The state legislation is an attempt to educate the, at the state level, and we're trying to educate, too. We're trying to educate at the town level. The state's trying to educate at the state level with their legislation, which frankly, not too many people have an understanding that that's gonna go forward, because we have to have three or four states agree on something. What's the chance of that happening? So, it's an attempt to educate. But the ultimate objective is to get the federal legislation. So, the Annie Custer news is really, really big news, because she's supporting the federal legislation now. Can we get the rest of our congressional delegation on board with it? That will be up to us, from the grassroots, to make that happen.
I like that, and, but is there a way to scratch out the word "state" and just leave it for the federal?
Can't change it now, because the petition's been signed by so many people.
If this doesn't pass, would you be willing-
Come back next year.
Come back next year without the word "state" in there, because that's, that's really scary. We would, we would put ourselves at such a disadvantage, and that's what I'm concerned about. I love the environment, but I'd be really concerned about the loss of jobs and businesses in our state, and I think, you know, even if it has no chance of passing, just leaving it there is a little, not risky, it's just sending the wrong message, so.
Hopefully, we won't have to come back a year, but we can.
Well, I would think there would be an advantage to say, let's wait and see if we can refine this another year. But that's just me, and I understand the need to get this going now, even if it is a flawed, if it's slightly flawed, you know, but I could see something much better without the word "state" in it. That's my, just me. It may not be the rest of the board, it may not be the voting public.
Dick, I have one other question. You said that the emissions are up approximately fourteen million, four hundred thousand tons per day in the US. What is it worldwide?
I don't know what it is worldwide, but I know that we-
Well, I mean, I mean, because, you know-
We were overtaken by China, but we're still number two.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I was just wondering, you know, we know some of the places are, you know, they live in tents, and-
Well, I think-
Very little.
I think we contribute eight percent of the world, does that sound?
I don't know.
Yeah, don't quote that.
Yeah, well, I'm-
I've seen it, and it's pretty staggering.
Yeah.
And we're huge users.
Okay. Thank you very much.
One comment on the carbon emissions. I don't know how many people are familiar with Mount Pentubo. Anybody? Does that ring a bell to anybody?
Mount Pentubo?
Neil, I figured you would know. Anyway, Mount Pentubo erupted in the early seventies in the Philippines. The first, don't quote me on this, the first five minutes of the eruption equaled all the carbon spilling in to the atmosphere of, from the industrial revolution to that present day, when it first started, you know, a hundred and whatever, don't quote me again. It was like, pretty much from the beginning of time to that minute, those first five minutes equaled that. The next hour equaled, and again, maybe it was the next hour, maybe it was the next fourteen days, but what Mount Pentubo put into the environment, and I guess it affected plane, air travel for that, for a whole twelve months after. There were no planes in the sky after this. It was a very dark summer, it affected so much. But just to put it in perspective, there's, what volcanoes do is pretty huge compared to what we as humans do, so.
All right, we'll go on to article-
Oh, that.
We'll go on to Article Five, the application of toxic chemical pesticides, herbicides, including but not limited to glyphosate II, four-dash-D, dicamba, fluoro, somebody want to pronounce these things?
I didn't even try.
Watch up here.
Prodiammoni will be banned for all turf, landscape, and outdoor pest management on Plymouth's public property, common areas, and playing field. Only pesticides approved for use under the USDA's National Organic Program or classified as minimum risk by the US EPA will be allowed for use. Exceptions include the use of these chemicals only for a public emergency, as determined by the Plymouth Public Health Officer, on a case-by-case basis. This usage is restricted to a one-time application to address a localized problem area. No broadcast or repeated application. All such areas must be posted with warning signs that remain in place for one month after the application. In addition, concentrations of the applied chemicals on ground services must be at ten percent or less than acute toxicity levels within one week of application, and all abutters must be notified in writing one week prior to the application. The ban will go into effect immediately. This article was inserted by petition. Do we have someone representing this?
Yeah, I'm Gisela Estes, and I'm a member on the Conservation Commission, and this warrant article is proposed by the, by the commission, the Conservation Commission. And the reason for this was that last summer, some chemicals were sprayed on the town common, and one of our residents noticed that their flag, and she's right here, the flag was up, warning people not to go on the grass and keeping children and pets off the grass. And so, she notified the Conservation Commission, and we were very concerned. It's very difficult to keep children and animals off the grass of the town common, and these chemicals are carcinogens, and that's the worst for children that they can be exposed to at such a young age. And so, the Conservation Commission had a meeting with Larry Gibson from the Parks and Recs, and with the Parks and Rec Committee, and we had a wonderful meeting, and the commissioners agreed that, yes, this was an oversight, they hadn't really thought about the, what could happen, the consequences, and in the future, they would not spray. And I think that was brought to your board, and you agreed, yes, that was a good idea, too. So, we were really happy to hear that. But then we thought about, what if we have new leadership? Eventually, there will be a new commissioner, the Parks and Rec Commissioner, a new committee, there will be new board members, and it might be forgotten that this is something that we wanted to do for the health of our children especially. And so, we thought that would be a good idea to have this as a warrant article, so that forever, there will be a notice that this should not be done now and in future years. So, do you have any questions?
Anybody?
No, I just remembered this summer, people talked to me about it, that they were very concerned about the spraying on the common specifically.
And I'm a grandmother, and some of you are parents and grandparents, and you don't want your children to be exposed. So, this is on the playing fields at the schools, this is the athletic fields, and any of the town property. And as you see, there is an exemption if we have a situation where something dangerous might happen if we don't use it, don't do something stronger. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Thank you. Joyce Weston, Representative from Grafton Eight. This is nowhere near the level of issue that climate change is, which is huge, but it's really important, because I think a lot of us in New Hampshire don't realize how much our state is suffering from some of the contaminations that we have. Working in commerce, I've discovered that one out of five families in New Hampshire has fertility problems, which is a problem with the PFAS, the chemicals in our system, and, what else am I gonna say? We have, we are at the top of the nation in four different kinds of cancers, which is really frightening. New Hampshire has, I mean, it's a fabulous state, and the top of the nation in so many ways, but when it comes to our health, we have some serious problems. So, we have to really think about what we're putting into the ground and into our rivers, into our water systems. This particular issue about our town common and our playing fields and so and so forth is just a very minor part of the issue that we need to pay attention to. So, it's part of a bigger problem. I really appreciate the climate change action that's taking place, and I think that we're gonna get a lot of response from the, from the community on this.
All right.
And thank you to Sally for bringing this to our attention.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Neil? Is it something different from what?
No. I'm Neil MacIver. I'm a member of the Conservation Commission, and I want to echo the remarks of Gigi and Joyce. This is a step in the right direction. We're just trying to bring this to the attention of citizens. It's a, it's a really important issue, the basically poison that people don't see, and they find out about it too late. And I endorse this petition.
All right, thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none?
John, I have one question.
All right.
Do, I, I love to see the concerns, and this is how things change, so, I don't know, I just assuming with the university at their, the way that they focus on the environment, and that they probably are already ahead of the curve not using those chemicals, because they do provide the ball fields for the kids to play youth sports down by the fieldhouse for baseball, not so much soccer they do there, but all those ball fields that they provide for the town, which is great. I don't even know if it's the university property, or whether it's the town's property, the ball field right alongside in Holderness, so.
All right.
I'm sure they're ahead of the curve.
All right. All right, thank you.
Move, John?
I think it would be worth inquiring. In the property, most of it is universally owned, but D and M is-
D and M.
Is privately owned, maintained by the university, but privately owned.
Yep. The final petition submitted will be voted on by ballot at the March elections on March tenth, 2020, at the Plymouth Elementary School from eight AM to seven PM. One of the other items that will be on the ballot is, do you favor adoption of the town manager plan as provided in Chapter Thirty-seven of the revised status annotated? This article was submitted by petition. Was it on there, handout? Was that, as far as adoption?
Town manager plan.
Yes?
Are you ready to have people speak?
Beg your pardon?
Are you ready to have people speak to it?
Go ahead.
Mr. Chair, Members of the Board, I'd like to introduce myself. My name's Merrillise O'Connor. I spent my entire career in state and local government. I served as, both as town administrator here, and town administrator in several other communities, and I've also served as town manager in several other communities in New Hampshire and in Vermont. Couple of weeks ago, I was asked by some folks to speak to people that were interested in running for select board, and I think there were some other folks there as well. And this topic came up, and I said if there was a petition submitted, and if there was a hearing or a discussion night, that I would come and speak to the issue, and so that's why I'm here. I'd like to thank you for allowing the time for not just this petition, but the others as well. It seems like there's enough interest in several things going on here tonight. I don't know if you're gonna have hearings that you publicize on these topics, but this one particular topic, there'll be no opportunity for people to discuss it as a group, because as you said, and I wanted to emphasize, this question is on the ballot. So, it's the Tuesday vote at the elementary school, town meeting's on Wednesday night, so there wouldn't be any- Town meeting's on Wednesday night, so there wouldn't be any opportunity for any group to discuss it if you weren't allowing the time here or if you decide to have a posted hearing about it, so to let people know. It seems like there should be some discussion about a big change like this.
I think we've, I think the town, we've had this, I've been, just been here 19 years, and I know we had it on the ballot.
It's been on the ballot.
Yeah, it's been on the ballot.
It's been on the ballot. But I, but my point is that people, people like making informed decisions and having a discussion where you discuss the differences in the two forms of government, I think are important. So I made some notes, if you'll bear with me.
And I think that's one reason, too. We have public hearings, and I'm saying this for the audience, for the people that are not here, because there are lots of benefits. I know we have budget hearings, and people don't come to the budget hearings, and they catch me in the store, or they catch me here and there. And these are the meetings that we want to have to get all the information and to be able to ask the question. And that's why we have public hearings, and that's why we want people to show up for the public hearings. I mean, things we're discussing tonight, we should have had a full house. And I know the weather is, you know, one of the issues, but thank you for...
Certainly. And that's why I came, too, because I know there's a limited amount of people who actually come in person, but people tell me that they watch all of you on TV, so hopefully, we'll get the word out. The Town Manager Form is provided under RSA 37. It's adopted, as we've said, and I want to emphasize this, by a vote, the ballot vote, which is the Tuesday vote. There'll be no discussion of it at town meeting. It'll be over by then. If it doesn't, if it passes and you find that it doesn't work out for the town, it can be rescinded. So it's not a forever thing. Certain authorities now held by the board would be placed by the town in the hands of a town manager. So I'm going to just cruise down through the list really quickly. The town manager would become the administrative head of all the departments, and so the department heads would report to the town manager. The town manager would hold hiring and firing authority. The town manager would set salaries and prepare the budget for you to approve and submit to town meeting. The town manager would approve all the payment of bills. The police chief and the library folks would continue to enjoy the statutory authorities that they have now, which are a little bit different and special. There's a question at the bottom of the Town Manager statute that would provide for the town manager also to be named tax collector, but I don't want to confuse anybody. That's a separate question. So the tax collector would remain elected. The town manager would oversee any contracts for work performed for the town, and the town manager may be assigned any additional duties as assigned by the board. Anybody that wants to look at the statute, it's RSA 37-6, which really goes into detail outlining the duties, but that's the general, that's the gist, and those, that's, the difference is, the duties of a town administrator are delegated. The duties of a town manager are authorized by statute. When it comes to the selection of a town manager, the selection needs to be with regard to the person's training, education, and experience, and without any reference to any political beliefs. The town manager actually raises his or her hand, right hand, and takes an oath to the town and must submit a bond payable to the town as well. It's widely held by those who favor professional management that the biggest advantage is that the day-to-day operations are largely insulated from politics or favoritism. Beyond that, this is my own opinion, I think that the board can more freely focus on things that are bigger picture items and don't get bogged down in the day-to-day operations or personnel issues. Again, my own opinion, Plymouth is big enough, and I think the taxes are certainly expensive enough so that a look at professional management is certainly warranted. I would urge voters to support this on that Tuesday at the polls.
All right.
Thank you. And if anybody wants to ask me a question, I'll be happy to try to answer it.
A lot of the questions have been answered previously and, you know, not tonight.
Oh.
In previous submittals of this to the town.
You mean other years?
Yes, yeah.
I have a question.
Yes.
Does a town manager generally have a higher salary than a town administrator?
It's up to the board. It's, it's, no, not necessarily. Some, they're pretty highly paid town administrators. It varies across the board, but...
Seems like the requirements are higher and responsibilities are higher, so I would think it would be higher.
I think the, in reference to that, with the town administrator, I mean, they oversee all these bills. They do a lot of the things that the town manager would be, but again, they're submitted in this format to be signed by the select board, where otherwise I think...
I think the answer is not necessarily.
Yeah.
It's across the board, and there are salary surveys, which should be available here, that could tell you which town administrator, which town manager are paid what in various towns throughout the state.
You were saying that this has all been covered before, but for a lot of people in town, they haven't really heard this discussion before.
Sure, sure.
I'm wondering if you might consider writing an article for the paper to let, because you're saying that we're not going to hear the discussion before we vote, and there's a simple solution to that. Let's educate the citizens of the town on what the differences are.
When you say article, what do you mean? Just, you don't mean, I'm not writing a letter to the editor, if that's what you mean.
No, it could be...
Submit an article based on the information you gave us tonight?
Yeah, I could do that. I just, I'm just...
You could, you could just do town manager versus town administrator.
Yeah, I could certainly. I could write something, and maybe then you folks would submit it to the paper.
All right. Bill?
No. Can I say?
Folks, folks, one person at a time. Bill, you had...
So I think rather than an article, which would be nice as well to compare the two positions, but to have that hearing and to actually, you know, query the townspeople and the board to see what affects, you know, going to a town manager.
To have a posted hearing here.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree with you.
Yeah, because, you know, you writing an article would be great, but, yeah, we need the input from, you know, the townspeople and the board.
Yeah. I think people might come if it were advertised.
Yeah.
May I? John?
Catherine?
So I just have a question from, you said it was on the ballot other times and it was defeated. Can you tell us the negatives or the positive?
No, I'm just, I'm just saying, it was proposed before, and I know some people, I don't, I don't really see a difference. I think in some ways, the town manager being, the town administrator is responsible for all of the employees, but from a disciplinary standpoint, they can go just so far, and then it comes to the select board. As a town manager, they make that decision. The, as I understand it, the...
Well, it's not just discipline. It's hiring, firing, it's organizing and directing the departments.
Exactly.
And it's, and it's, it's by statute. It's not because the board delegated it, which in some towns, more is delegated, in some towns, less.
Yeah, yeah. What I'm saying is, right now, in Plymouth, the town administrator submits a request to hire someone or to fire someone for disciplinary action. The town manager does not have to get permission from the select board, as I understand it. Now they do. So, so again, you know, there's, some of those things are assumed there. Jenny?
I just want to reiterate that when we're talking about the elections, we're not talking about the primary, which is a federal election. We're talking about the town elections, which is in March. So when we talk about when things are happening, if we decided to do a hearing, there would be time for a hearing or an article in the paper or something like that, because we're not looking until March.
This is March 10.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay, yes.
I have just a general question.
Not for me?
No, no. Articles 3, 4, and 5 says will be voted on by ballot.
Yeah, it'll be on the...
On March 10.
Yeah.
No, 3, 4, and 5 will be at town meeting.
The final...
I'm sorry.
Okay, so that, that bold final petition submitted will be voted, that's a heading for the next one?
Yes.
Okay. Totally confused me. The town manager one has to be on ballot.
Okay. Any other comments by the board?
Made me scared.
Any comments by the public, which was not otherwise stated?
I have a question. Have a question?
Yes.
So do you feel as though the select board should or should not weigh in on this? The select board is the most impacted by the town manager decision. I would think it would be good to hear from you as a body as to what your opinion is.
Well, you know, and what I would say to that is, this town belongs to the people of this town, and these people have the opportunity to come out, discuss, and at the ballot, make these decisions. And, you know, one way or the other, having done this for seven years, you know, I mean, there's a lot of things, you know, maybe it would, maybe it wouldn't be more efficient, but, you know, I think, you know, getting out and getting the people in, have a public hearing, I think it's, I think it's fine. We just want to have people turn out, because like I say, I mean, everybody, you know, has comments about the budget, but they don't show up for the budget hearing. And that's an opportunity that people have, and I have, whether it be rude or not, you know, if they didn't come to the budget hearing or they came and misunderstood something, I'll talk to them, but if they don't come to the budget hearing, you know, they can look in the printed thing and they can talk to somebody else, because I've, I made my safe available two nights, and, you know, that's the time for people to do it, yes.
How do we make a budget, or not a budget hearing, how do we make a hearing on this issue happen?
You can talk to Kathy.
I don't want to talk to Kathy. I mean, Kathy, I like you very much. I like to talk to you lots, but I'm not, I mean, I'm...
Anybody, anybody can come to, anybody can come to the town, town and request a public hearing, and at that point, the, how was that decision made, whether we, because, again, maybe something doesn't require a public hearing, but if we wanted to do this...
Do you want to just decide?
Yeah, so I think we did agree to have like a public hearing, and we should have a public hearing by the board to ask Kathy to set a date, you know, sometime, whenever, the earliest convenience.
We want, somebody want to make a motion for the board?
Do you want a motion to do that?
All right.
I guess Kathy's shaking her head no, so she'll...
We don't need...
Set up a meeting and...
Okay.
No, yes.
So no motion required?
See, that's why we have a town administrator advise us and keep us out of trouble. All right. Hearing no more public comments, I will conclude the public hearing, and thank you, everybody, for coming out tonight.
Thank you.
Jenny? Jenny?
Yes.
Can I use your pass?